Okay, all right, ready? All right. Call the special city council meeting to order. Commissioner Smith, you give us the prayer and pledge, please, sir.
Our Father God, we come once again before your presence. Asking of God for your continued guidance, your blessings upon this meeting, upon this council, upon this mayor. That you will lead us and guide us in the direction you have us to go, that all do what you shall do and say be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. That we be good stewards of the resources you providing for us. Bless those that intend us, and our son in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Sean, come on down. Get right into it. I know the weather's bad and had extra traffic. I wasn't sure it was a hairy ride getting here, but we appreciate you coming out tonight.
Sorry about the tardiness. Yeah, the weather got me.
Okay, get your mic up. Speak in the mic loud if you can.
That better?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. There's normally a click there? Good evening. For the record, Sean Ocasio with Reftalis Financial Consultants. Coming back to you today, encore presentation. You know, from the follow-up from last week's council meeting. So one of the things that we looked at at the request of the council was some alternative scenarios. What I'm gonna do in this, it's a brief slideshow this evening. Recap the, just the prior presentation, what was covered on the third, then talk about the alternatives that were requested by the commissioners. And then talk about summary findings and revised rate adjustment recommendation. So just as a quick recap from last week. We, as a part of that presentation, we reviewed the major tasks and considerations associated with the rate study. So that's looking at things like cash flow, overall liquidity and cash balances for the utility system. As well as, you know, other loan covenant requirements like your debt service coverage. Those are all major considerations that we, you know, look at when we're evaluating the overall sufficiency of revenues for the system. We then also reviewed the major assumptions embedded in the water and sewer and reclaim water rate analysis. Such as customer growth, operating expenses, annual debt service payments, your capital improvement program or your CIP. And then the corresponding related funding plan. Just to recap, some of the major issues that are impacting the rates for the city. There's the significant capital improvement program to upgrade and expand the system. And then associated with funding of that capital plan, there is the future increase in annual debt service payments. Due to the additional borrowing that would be required in order to fund some of those major projects in the multi-year capital plan. Another item is, you know, the inflationary increases in operating expenses and some additional personnel as well built into that plan. So the discussion there was showing significant rate increases. That, I'm sorry, there's another item. It was the listing, which I have at the end of this presentation, if we want to reference it again. Were just some other municipalities that are also experiencing significant rate adjustments that have been adopted. So to recap the prior rate proposal, it was a fifteen and a half percent increase across the board for the water, wastewater and reclaimed systems. For fiscal years twenty-six and twenty-seven, followed by three and a half percent per year for fiscal years twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Then at the presentation, the council had requested review of two additional rate scenarios. In order to try to slow the bill impacts to your existing customers. Alternative one, we'll call it, was to aim for less than ten percent per year for fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-six through twenty-twenty-nine. So to accomplish that scenario, we evaluated it based on nine and three-quarter percent increase per year. Alternative two was to keep the same first year increase at fifteen and a half percent. But then lower the second year increase to nine percent and then the subsequent increases to six percent per year. And that would be the path for twenty-two, twenty-six through twenty-twenty-nine. In order to develop these scenarios, we also tried to adjust the CIP in order to try to make these alternatives work. So one thing I want to mention that was also a part of the scenarios, and this impacts both of them accordingly. Was we did also get some updated twenty-two, twenty-six budget information that we folded into the forecast period as well. With that information, that did increase operating costs predicted for twenty-two, twenty-six and beyond by about two and a half million dollars. That spread across the various utility departments. So that's an increase in cash outflows of about two and a half million dollars for twenty-two, twenty-six through twenty-twenty-nine. That being said, we also had additional information about two and a half million dollars of additional grant funding that wasn't built into the plan previously that we just got information on. So we netted that against the capital projects. And then we also made adjustments of about eight point seven million dollars to pay as you go capital or rate funded ongoing capital. Related projects, the two main ones that were adjusted there. Annual water pipe replacement program and the wastewater collection system pipe R and R program or renewal and replacement program. Those projects are still being funded, just not quite to the same degree over the forecast period in order to try to make some cuts. And that eight point seven million is again spread across the water and wastewater system. One other adjustment that we made in the plan was there's a significant project of about twenty-five million dollars, a water plant expansion project. And that project was pushed back in its timing from fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-seven to fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-eight. And what that allowed us to do there was, you may recall in the prior presentation. We were looking at two additional borrowings in order to fund the capital plan. By splitting this twenty-five million dollar project out and pushing it back a year, we were able to fund the plan over three debt issuances. So why is that important? It's because now we can stair step those increases in debt payments over a three-year period of time instead of a two-year period of time. So it gives a little bit of rate relief there to phase up into. So with those adjustments in mind, again, the O and M, the capital, the debt structuring and so on. We looked at the first alternative at a rate of nine point seven five percent per year for fiscal years twenty-six through twenty-nine. That's a total cumulative increase of just over forty-five percent by twenty-twenty-nine, slightly higher on the tail end, but lower increase on the front end. When we looked at that scenario, that rate path.
Can I pause you right there real quick?
Yes, sir.
Quick question. The forty-five point one. How do we get to that number?
It's a cumulative but compounding. So if you, if you go up by nine point seven five the first year. When you go up by nine point seven five the second year, it's also accounting for that incremental increase of the nine point seven five of the first year. So they actually compound over time. So it's, you end up with a higher rate than just adding the nine point seven fives together.
So it's like a time value money calculation? Is that the same scenario or?
It's, it's not so much a time value of money. It's just the compounding. So if it was. I'll use a simple example for myself here. If it's a ten dollar bill and we increase it ten percent the first year, it's now eleven. But if we increase it ten percent again, the increase is not another dollar, it's a dollar ten. So each increase, even though there's still ten percent, gets a little higher on each cycle.
So is that same calculation being done on that original table as well?
I can get it. I don't have it listed on this slide here. I think that one was, I want to say forty-two and change. I can, I can pull that though.
No, then that, that tracks with the numbers that I'm doing. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. So when we looked at this particular scenario, the rates weren't generating sufficient margins to, to. To say, well, I'll say cautiously safely meet the coverage requirements in the latter years of the forecast. The reason I mentioned that is because, again, since we're lower increase on those first two, when the new debt starts to come online. Again, remember your debt service coverage is a ratio that's represented by your gross revenues minus your operating costs. So your net revenues. That net revenue number compared to your, your debt payment. So since the revenue component of that is increasing at a slower rate, the debt's increasing. We did stair step it, so there's some benefit there, but it wasn't quite enough. So. It's projected that while it would be above your requirement level, it'd be right on the, on the line there. So the risk there is. If your operations don't occur as planned, if you have, you know, a bit more operating costs or a bit less revenue. Then that could be a risk for what's called technical default on your, your loan agreements. Technical default is not an issue where you can't make the payment. It's just you can't make the, the margin requirement on top of the payment. That's a part of that.
Does the lender at that point, do they, does that, do we become in default if that happens? Or is it just we're calling it technical default? It's, nothing actually occurs?
There, there could be impact. One of the things they'll want to see is that you have a plan in place to fix that issue. There may be some credit willingness implications. I'll be honest, that's a, an area where that'd be more the realm of an FA to make that kind of comment. But essentially, it can, it can put you at, at risk there in other borrowings.
Thank you.
Also, the, the rate plan under that level, because again, it's slower on the front end and everything. The rates don't generate quite enough cash flow to achieve the, the city's targeted cash balance level by the last year of the forecast of about a hundred and fifty days by twenty-twenty-nine. So you'd be running very lean on cash. You'd be running very lean on coverage in this particular scenario.
That scenario does hit the hundred and twenty day mark, correct, of reserves?
Yes, sir. By the, by the last year. It dips a little bit in twenty-eight. This is a rather busy slide here. The, the top left slide is cash outflows and cash inflows. So the bars represent expenses, debt payments, transfers and capital. The dotted lines at the two colors, the black dotted line is representative of revenues at existing rates. The blue dotted line is representative of revenues at the proposed rates under the new rate trajectory here in the scenario. The top right chart is then a projection of operating reserves over the forecast period. And so essentially, it'll remain roughly about the one-twenty days level, dipping below that. What I would note here is that would be all unrestricted reserve essentially for the city. And, you know, the, the target has normally been a hundred and eighty days of revenue for the city of Apopka, but being okay with a hundred and fifty days. So we would be running a little lean at a hundred and twenty days here on this scenario. But it would get to that one-twenty day by the end, but not to the one-fifty that we were looking at in the, the original scenario there. In terms of annual debt service coverage, that's the two bottom charts there. They're, they're very busy. The, the left one. Is representative of the senior lien obligation. So your bonds and those sorts of items. You would be in compliance here. The, the steep decline that you see going from twenty-five to twenty-six and then the smaller decline in twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Is when those other debts come online. Again, that ratio analysis, as the debt goes up, the coverage goes down. So not as big an issue here, but on the subordinate lien side, your, your SRF loans. You'll see the decline. And if you look at the, the net revenue one, that's the, the orange bar component there in twenty-two, twenty-seven, twenty-two, twenty-eight. It's at a one point one nine. Your, your minimum requirement with SRF is a one point one five. So you'd be very tight on that margin there. And again, if, if operating costs came in higher or if revenues came in just a bit lower. There's the risk that you would dip below that requirement threshold. The second alternative we looked at was the, the same increase in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-six. And then a lighter increase in twenty-seven and then an averaging out in twenty, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, fifteen point five, nine percent and six percent per year. Cumulative increase, it's about forty-one point five percent. Again, that compounding issue by twenty-twenty-nine, just under the original scenario. Again, I think the original was about forty-two point something. I'd have to double check to be precise. In this particular scenario, because the, the increase is again, a little more front loaded. It does generate sufficient margins to make sure that those coverage requirements aren't as tight in those middle years as the new debts come on. And it also generates sufficient cash flow to make, to meet the, the minimum target that we were originally aiming for of a hundred and fifty days of unrestricted reserves by twenty-twenty-nine. Same chart layout here, you'll see the, the operating reserve by, by the end of the window, getting to about that hundred and fifty days of cash level. And again, if you look at the bottom right chart, the twenty-two, twenty-seven and twenty-two, twenty-eight are, they have a, a bit more margin there compared to your requirement. So it's a little bit safer in case something happens in, in the planning cycle. You're not immediately going below your required level. Terms of the comparison here, so this comparison is still showing the, the fifteen-five is based on alternative two that we were just talking about. We did update it for a couple of the communities that we know have rate adjustments upcoming in twenty-two, twenty-six. You'll see that for the city of Winter Garden on the left. You'll see that for City of Groveland to the right and as well as the City of Oviedo. So with those known changes in rates that are forthcoming for those particular communities in twenty-two, twenty-six. It does raise the average bill on the comparison slightly to about eighty-one dollars and thirty cents. Which would put the, the city of Apopka's bill at six thousand gallons of usage just slightly above that level at eighty-two dollars and forty-six cents.
But that doesn't, so the only ones that you have that are the new rate is Winter Garden, Apopka and Oviedo. The rest of these are the, the twenty-five rates, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So again, we're, we're in the same situation. So again, we're we're in the same situation that the revenues at existing rates, so the existing rates themselves are projected to be insufficient through twenty twenty nine. Again, due to increases in operating costs, your your capital improvement program for renewal and replacements for expansions and upgrades to the system. And the associated additional debt service costs are what are, you know, causing that, again, even with the adjustments we made in terms of reducing the the capital plan by about nine million dollars. Pushing back twenty five million dollars of a debt issuance, you know, there were some additional costs on the on the operating and maintenance cost side that also impacted this. So the revised rate proposal here would be under scenario two, and the the same increase for twenty six, but a lower one in twenty seven. The other thing I would would note here is there's also. The the other city initiatives that were discussed on the meeting on the third. That the city administrator talked about in that meeting about different revenue enhancements and other items that could be made to potentially. Make the picture look better in those latter years, once those things are are accounted for. I know this is just a special meeting, so there's no action right now, but again, the the proposed rate adjustment plan would would have a positive cash flow through the forecast period. Your coverage requirements would have a a safe margin to them and you would still hit that desired one fifty day target of cash by twenty twenty nine.
Thank you, Sean. Radley Williams, interim city administrator, mayor commissioners, just wanted to take a moment to kind of dig back into the four one budgets. And just present some additional information at the four one as a whole. So this first slide, and I did provide a sheet there that has this information along with some additional detail with the year over year spends for those budgets. The FY twenty six tentative four one budget, I've split this down into personnel costs, operating costs, capital costs. Debt cost and transfer to dent general fund, so this first pie chart illustrates. What percentages of the overall combined four one budget, propose or tentative budget go to each of those categories. So our personnel costs are looking at twenty three percent, operating at forty, capital at twenty three. Debt is registering under one under zero, so one hundred thirty thousand, and then transfer to general fund is at the six point two million. I just broke that out into what each dollar goes into that. This chart just takes that data and puts it into a bar chart for you to to see a trend here. So year over year, the the operating costs are relatively similar, we do have an increase in twenty four. And again, an increase in this twenty six budget, and you'll see the capital, which is a light green, definitely has a large increase this year. Just to highlight some of the major capital projects in the tentative four one budgets and four oh three budgets. The four one tentative budget has a proposed nine point eight million dollars in capital improvements. The four or three tentative budget, which again is our impact fee, we're estimating projects at twenty six point three million dollars. So those are those are those projects directly related to the new growth in the city. Going down the list here. I just wanted to provide, again, a call out to the major infrastructure, major improvements that we're looking to accomplish in this FY twenty six budget. Including the new flexnet tower bases. Some emergency generators, some upsizing agreements, the ozone treatment design for Grosse and Bakker.
Before you leave that slide, just I just want everybody to take a just a quick look, if if you look down. About the sixth item, it says lift station rehabilitation replacement program, lift station number seventeen, three point seven million dollars, that's in the four one account. But to go down a few more lines down and you'll see another lift station. Master lift station upsize program, SLS seventeen construction, two point five million. So what that's telling you is that as we replace that lift station seventeen, which is over fifty years old. That some of the money's coming from operating for for us that have lived here for my entire life. And then the other, the two and a half million is coming from new residents paying their impact fee, so. That's that's an example of a lot of things that we're doing in the city are, they're a combination of the four one, which is operating, which. For everybody who's been here ten years, fifty years, whatever, a hundred years, we're paying that. The four oh three is is the impact fees that are that are for all the new construction going on. So as you see, a lot of the projects we're doing, it it'll be it'll be a balance or it'll be. It'll have both four one and four oh three funds paying for a particular. Item or facility or whatever, so I just want to highlight that just because I think sometimes we get lost in the, you know, in the the big numbers and we'll drill down as to how that, how we come up with that number.
Alright, so again, just a list here of some of the higher major capital projects that we have identified for this fiscal year coming up. And as we discussed at the last council meeting, we are undertaking some additional steps to to build on the positive trends in the utility operations. That includes the pushing and rectifying all the flexnet meter issues by end of the end of this calendar year. Installing new flexnet base stations. Preparing a proposed new installation fee adjustments, and that's again for new water taps, sewer taps, those rates. When in our initial review, do look like they need some increasing. Working a new email notification system to help try and get delete accounts back online before going to collections. Proposing a utility tampering fee or fine, I'm sorry, apologies for the typo, fine to accompany the tampering repair costs. And again, try and discourage any tampering of our utility equipment. Search for additional operational small capital budget efficiencies as we move through FY twenty six, so that includes looking at the trucks. That we have not only this upcoming capital plan, our capital plan year, but also the next four years to see what's the operational need. What's the status of the vehicle, can we get a little bit more life out of it? And then also looking to propose a small credit card processing fee to recover some of the credit card processings that are currently being paid by utility fund. Again, the the plan is to. Get through the first quarter of FY twenty six and then reengage with Raftellus to assess how those adjustments are are affecting. The operation and the trends, and then as we discussed the last meeting, the pleasure of the council, we can bring this back halfway through the fiscal year. To to get this in front of you to see if there's where the positive trends are looking at. And I just wanted to take a chance to, we put together this this table. And the goal of this table is just to take the current rate, the proposed FY twenty six rate increase of fifteen and a half percent. And extend that out. To estimate some FY twenty six bills compared to what the current rate is. So if you're looking at the water zero to six thousand gallon line. We have the current rate, well, obviously we have base rate in the first line and the current rate reflect that we reflect those out. And that estimated FY twenty six bill sits at fourteen thirty five, the current FY twenty five bill is twelve forty two for a dollar ninety three difference, so. Just thought this was good information to, rather than go for a specific estimated bill, kind of break it out by the different consumption rate levels that we have. The six thousand, the six zero to six thousand gallon rate is a six thousand dollar, a six thousand gallon estimate. The six thousand one to fifteen thousand is a fifteen thousand gallon estimate, so we're using the high end estimate of those levels to give you a look at what that could look like. And I think that's the last slide and we can be available for questions and.
Let me, let me ask you, do we know what the average? Homeowner consumes, how many gallons? Oh, okay.
Our finance director's working on it.
Alright.
But I thought this would be helpful for even homeowners to look at this chart and kind of see where they might land on the consumptive use to kind of get an idea of what that might look like.
Any other questions for Sean or Radley?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, Sean, thank you for coming back and and running through these scenarios for us, definitely appreciate the exercise, and again, it helps to the public to understand kind of. What we're trying to accomplish as well as kind of the pain points of how we're navigating this. What is our total amount for four one debt that we're going to be taking on? Because I'm not seeing that in any of our budgets of what like updated debt costs are going to be, but we're. Increasing rates as if it's there somewhere, so I just, what's that total amount, is it that one eighty eight?
No, it's it's, I want to say by the end of the forecast window, it was about eight point two, eight point three million in total additional annual debt service cost on top of what you pay today, which I. Go in for memory, I believe is about five million, one of the things in that chart with the breakdown of the dollar, that was the debt funded from fund four one, but you have a very significant portion of your debt that's funded also from fund four oh, uh, four oh three.
Can you actually go back to that that slide, please? Thank you, so say that again, please?
Sure, so when it comes to budgeting your annual debt service payments, you pay them out of fun, a portion of them out of fund four one, but also a portion out of, I believe, fund four oh three, the impact fee funds. The reason for that is, again, impact fee monies can be used for expansion related capital costs, which we're using in the plan. But you can also use it for the expansion related component of debt. So to the extent you have debt that was used to expand a facility, then a a per rad a share of that that was associated with the expansion could be funded through these expansion type fees. And so that that hundred and thirty there, I think is just that component of it. Because the the other portion of your debt that's being funded from those growth fees is about the the difference, you know, five million, four million, change.
But the total debt you said is about, is going to raise to eight point two?
In terms of annual debt service payments, I can grab my other briefing document.
If you can, yeah, just so I have that number, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Just while he's getting that, just one of, one of the things that Radley was talking about is the increased revenue fee increases. So these are for like the taps for water, wastewater. Reclaimed water and backflows. The number that if we, and we have to, obviously, we have to be able to to justify these numbers, but looks like we can increase the revenue per year. About two hundred sixty two thousand dollars on on all the, all of those taps. The the utility billing fee was, if that's if we go two dollar per credit card charge, that would be forty three thousand dollars. The. Financial impact, you know, we've got, obviously, we're looking at the meters as we get to lower the no reads and the estimates, we we're we're expecting some some additional revenue there. I know that's, but but Sean has to work in the current, he can't work in what we we hope to do, and so that's, the numbers he gives us are. If he were to go to the bond market today, he couldn't go on what we think we can collect, he's got to go on what we're currently collecting, and so.
And what you have a plan in place for, yes, sir.
And that's that's his role here is to make, you know, to give us, you know, if we go to the bond market to borrow money for whatever. He's got to be able to stand by his, you know, his numbers, and so that's, and we appreciate, you know. You know, your honest assessment of where we are.
Yes, sir, thank you. So regarding the the capital improvement program, it was originally total expenditure is about one hundred eighty eight million dollars, again, we we pared that down by about, I want to say nine million or so, and then there was also two and a half million of grant funding that we got information on. But in terms of the the total funding of the plan, about a hundred and one million, it was originally anticipated to be funded through borrowing. And that had a corresponding increase in the annual debt service payment by the end of the forecast period of about eight point one, eight point two million dollars.
That's between both funds, or is that just for four one?
Oh, between the two.
Okay, are you able to tell me what four one exclusively would be taking on?
I can go back, I'm sorry.
Yes, please, thank you.
And while he's getting that, Mayor, you mentioned the credit card fee.
Yes.
Is that going to be a flat two dollar fee regardless of what you.
Correct.
The builder?
Yeah, well, what we we were looking at the average bill, the credit card was eighty one dollars, I think something.
Yeah, we were trying to keep it below the.
What it would, the three percent, which is what a credit card would charge.
Okay, the reason why I was asking, because I know when you go to some merchants, they actually charge the three percent of whatever you're, you've charged them with a card. And so that's why I was wondering if it's just going to be a flat two dollars.
Just two dollars.
Okay.
They charge us the, yeah, the three percent, so, you know, the credit cards, and so we we wanted to keep it under what they would pay. If you take eighty one dollars times three percent, that's two dollars and forty cents, so the average bill, they're still getting, it's less. It it's still a hit to us, but not near what the full, the full thing is, yeah.
Mrs. Sherman, I actually have a couple of questions for you while Mr. Sean's working on that, maybe I can run through those questions to give them a little bit more time. We had said, or it was presented that there's an additional, like about two and a half million dollars in grants that that we're expecting. Where are those coming from or what what are those grants?
That grant is the grant that we receive, the state appropriation for the asbestos galvanized pipe project.
So we'd already received that?
Well, we just got awarded, it just came to council not too long ago.
Right, okay, so that's not, it's new, but it's not like as, it's not within the last week, no?
No, 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 but basically what we did when going through this exercise, we had the opportunity to try to true up everything to make sure we was on. You know, the same page, this process started months and months ago. And they actually started with a basis of FY twenty five with escalations in it. So, because they have cost escalations, so basically what we did this time as we were going through it, looking at these scenarios, we trueed everything up.
Okay, understood, the, so we were talking about lift stations and how obviously some increase in capacity is able to be. That cost is able to be put onto the impact fee side four oh three. What's in average, so that, it's a total of six point two million between four one and four oh three for lift station number seventeen. Is that an average cost, and maybe that's not a you question, but is that is that an average cost to do what we need to do for a lift station of that age?
Actually, it should represent the capacity component of the project.
Vladimir Simonovsky, Public Works Director, Commissioner Nesta, that's related to the particular lift station. So the increase in capacity for that one lift station, which is number seventeen. It's percentage wise presented in the budget, so.
I broken up like that, but so on that, so it's, this is not just being kind of brought up to date, so to speak, it's also being.
It's not an average, may, another lift station may be fifty percent, right?
Okay, so about three million per lift station, what's our average age of lift stations right now, do you happen to know that? And I'm not going to hold you to this, plus or minus ten years.
I don't have that information for you, because a lot, you you have to take into account that a lot of the developments are actually new developments. And. Just maybe for for tots, right? Let's say five years ago, we had about hundred and forty one lift stations, right now, we have five years later about hundred and sixty seven, something like that.
Hundred and sixty seven, okay.
And I think what lift station seventy seven is going to be, that's going to be more expensive than seventeen.
I believe so, yes, yes, because that's going to be a quadruple pump, yes.
Okay. Would you have that information later on available to be able to give us that kind of average age of of across the board?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Just so we kind of understand, because if one is three million dollars and they have a hundred and sixty seven of them, some are newer, that's fine, but I assume some are aged. So we, it it, we need to put at least, understand what that looks like long term.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And in the system overall, there's only total of eleven master lift stations, all the other ones are some of smaller, most of them are actually residential subdivisions.
Right.
And and also can you give us the life, average life of a lift station?
Yes, yeah, we can definitely look into that.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, for sure.
Yeah, just for information, this number seventeen.
Yes.
Is, is nineteen seventy, so it was an old package plan that was converted to a lift station, and that's one of the most critical lift stations that we have on the list.
Got you, understood, thank you.
I'm sorry, lift station number seventeen.
Number seventeen.
It's from nineteen seventy?
Nineteen seventy.
And where was that one located again?
This is right next to. Frank Carlton.
Is that the one by the skate park over there?
Yes.
Oh, that's the one that the kids always complain about, that is.
Lift station smell.
Back to your your question of the the breakdown of that eight million and change. Um, so, uh, of that amount, it's about eight point one million dollars by the end, of which about 5.3 million would be funded from, uh, 403. Uh, and the remainder about 2.8 million, um, would be from 401.
And by that, in 2.8, again, just to restate it, 2.8 is the debt service per year that that'll be increased to. Okay. Increased to, correct. So, well, over the, the 130, so maybe total debt cost will be just over three million?
So total existing debt across both funds right now is about five million dollars a year. That would be increasing to about 13.1 million by the end. But again, it's, it's broken out. About two point, excuse me, 5.3 million of the, of that expansion, the, excuse me, the newer debt, um, would be funded from, uh, Fund 403 or about 35% of it.
Okay, so
Excuse me, um, the, the end verse. Um, the 35% would be from 401.
Understood, okay. So the 403 will have total debt service cost annually of 10.3 million approximately. And then the what's that number? So about four and a half million for Fund 401.
So, uh, one thing with that, um, when it, when you are paying, um, annual debt service from impact fees, uh, these, uh, water and sewer connection impact fees, there are certain limits because you also have to have the revenues from the impact fees coming in to then put towards it. So if growth slows down, then its, uh, proportion could change as, as a function of that as well. So.
Interesting. Okay. So as development starts to slow down and we don't see as much of these revenues coming in on the impact fee side,
Right.
401 may have to then pick up the slack.
Correct. That, that is a, that is a possibility there because, um, it's, those impact fee revenues are a function of growth.
Wow, okay. How often do you see that happen in, in other municipalities that you work for, that that occurs where their impact fee debt service payments, they can't keep up with that and it has to go to their 401 equivalency?
No, no, good, a good question there. Um, what, what I will say there is, um, you know, on our, at least on a ratio basis, um, the, the city's proportional payment of its existing and future debt, uh, being funded from impact fees is high. So you're trying to make the most of the revenues that you're getting to go towards that debt. Um, so it is higher than the other communities I work with. As far as projected slowdowns in that, well, you know, we, while we are experiencing significant growth, you know, right now and in the past, you know, five years and even a little bit before that as well, on, on an average basis. You know, we are anticipating slowdowns, you know, in the future. So that would be a thing. So, you know, one other concern that could be in like a more longer term horizon would be that, that potential risk out there of, you know, over reliance on, on impact fees. Um, I, this was before the time I was, uh, uh, practicing, um, but, uh, Henry, uh, you know, and then let me know about it was, you know, back in, I want to say oh seven, oh eight, the housing market collapsed. That took a, a big impact on, you know, on impact fee revenues because of the change in growth and everything there. And so if you did have, uh, uh, communities that were relying on those impact fee revenues, it could, uh, could and, and to, uh, a number of communities did cause a rate increase just because of that lost revenue.
To take on, yeah, take on the, that debt service annually. Okay, understood. Thank you for that. Got that question, grant funding, um, average of sales. So the, the transfer to general fund, we have not really increased that. I guess why is that, what is that based off of? What number is that based off of?
So the, um, the, the budgeted, uh, transfer to the general fund, I want to say in the 25 and 26, about six million, six point two million dollars. Um, there's a, a couple of components, uh, embedded in there. Uh, part of it is, um, uh, a part of it is, uh, uh, indirect cost reimbursement to, uh, the general government itself. Um, and that's a, a large portion of, of the, the, the transfer there.
Can you give me some examples of that?
Sure. Um, so as an example, um, you know, the, the utility system for the city has the benefit of being a part of the city. And so if it was, let's say, a privately owned, uh, company, it would have to have its own HR department, its own IT department, its own, you know, finance group and so on. All of those other administrative overhead type functions, they would have to house internally, but because they're a part of the city, the, the city's HR department, IT department, finance and, and so on, general government function, city manager. You know, they have a, a portion of their time allocated to providing service and support to the utility system. And so a good portion of that transfer, um, that the utility system is making to the general fund is to reimburse it for those costs that are, that associated with the benefit that it's receiving.
Okay. Is that exclusively what that would be built out of or what that's?
That is the, I believe, the, the majority of it.
Okay.
Historically, what the city has also had as a part of that transfer, it, it used to be a, a broken out item. It was, um, uh, in lieu of, uh, charge, uh, payment in lieu of tax, payment in lieu of franchise fee. And in conjunction with that, uh, transfer to the general fund as a reimbursement. Um, what we've, uh, done here is, uh, essentially called it all one transfer to the general fund. And then, uh, uh, on a percentage basis, increasing it over time, we've slowed that growth rate. Uh, the, the reason being, um, you can end up with some circulars, if you will. So if, let's say you had, um, uh, uh, a rate of return on the, on the funds, uh, you know, a certain percentage, five percent, six percent. Well, as you raise the rates, that percentage rate of return would increase, right? So to some extent, the increase in the rate of return then goes back and drives the rate increase and you end up with a bit of a loop there. So one of the, the directions we were provided was to, to, to break that link so that that wouldn't happen here. And we wouldn't have this kind of iterative cycle of, of, uh, rate increase, increasing a transfer, increasing a rate increase and, and so on. So that was collapsed down into just a, a flat five percent per year increase, uh, there to not, uh, link back to that. But the, the bulk of the transfer there or the majority of the transfer is that indirect cost reimbursement.
Well, it doesn't seem like we're increasing it at all. If you look at the 22, 23, 24, 24 increase, but that was it. 25 came back down and we're duplicating 25 again.
It is increasing in the, in the model, but the, we, uh, the mayor basically wanted to keep it at the same level, at the same amount each year.
When I came into office, we were, the transfers from the utilities to the general fund was higher than it should have been. But I didn't want it to shock to the, the, the general fund. So instead of getting it to where it should be at around seven percent, um, we just are holding the line and, and letting, catching up with the, the transfers as obviously, you know, health insurance goes up, pensions go up. Those kinds of things that are the, the transfers. We're just going to hold the line and then I guess for the next three or four years will be where we should be at seven percent of transfers from, from utilities to the general fund.
Right. The, the intention was that as a percentage of your total revenues, that transfer would be a declining percentage of that.
I'm just doing quick maths. Give me a second, please. So that, the general, the transfer to general fund is currently 14% of the total 401 budget. I mean, it's, it's 14%, it's on the other side, which is, yeah, the, the, if you go to the chart, it depicts that properly. So it's that 14%. So with what was just said, we're trying to get that to seven percent? I guess what was it at before?
Want to say that's a, a stretch for my memory there. So I don't want to be inaccurate.
I guess I, I just want to see what that, I guess, that number, what's built out of it or what's built into it and then
What's that? That, I mean, that's the number that, that you've, I know, Sean, you've looked at it from the average across the municipalities, about seven percent is the average transfers.
It, it can vary, but it, it can be within that range. Um, because it depends on what the, the different communities have. So some, uh, communities will have, uh, a payment in lieu of taxes and a payment in lieu of franchise fee. They may have a rate of return component. Um, they may have, they, to, to be perfectly frank, that some will also use it to do some budget balancing as well. And that can be over and on top of the indirect cost reimbursement as a part of that. And, um, so it, it kind of depends on what that particular municipality has, because I work with some communities that don't have any of those. And I work with some communities that have all of them. Um, so that's why there's a bit of a variance there. But I do recall back in the prior study with the city back in, uh, 2021, 2022, the total combined transfers to the general fund inclusive of the indirect cost reimbursement, I want to say was upwards of 30%, which was a, a significant percentage, which is why we're trying to bring that down over time, but still not shock the general fund.
Okay. Yeah. Cause I mean, it's been at 20%. When 2022, yeah, it was at 25%. We've been up there for a while. And I guess that's my concern too, is this being used to subsidize the general fund? Because if we're, we're taken into HR, all of those items into account to build this transfer amount, it just seems a little ambiguous, uh, that we've kind of just kept it the same versus actually building it out to what the actual costs are that are associated with this.
Yeah, back in the
Yeah.
Yeah, back when, uh, with the, the other component. Yeah, it was, it would have been about seven million back then.
Back then being?
2021.
Okay. Cause I mean, it was seven million in 2024 as well. Can you come up here, please?
Around, when we first looked at this and we looked at the transfer amount and how it was calculated, um, back in 2021, it was about seven million dollars when calculated. But basically, as I said, the mayor has kept it at the same level, same amount. Our cost has gone up, but we haven't increased that. Every personnel cost has gone up, everything.
Well, that's my question, but the why, I guess the why, there's no
Because lessen the impact on the Fund 401.
I understand, but if we're, is one subsidizing the other is what I guess my question. We don't know what's built into the six point two, four, one, five, three, four, three million.
Well, that's what he just explained to you, the indirect cost, the personnel cost for like finance, HR, all of those fees, all of those costs is, is pretty standard. It's pretty standard. You typically have a cost allocation model, but in this particular case, we do have a calculation. And it includes that indirect cost and those other costs that he mentioned.
So I understand. We just, we don't have, I guess, there's not, you couldn't provide me with exactly how that six point two was broken down.
We'll break it down for you.
Well, no, I, I don't need you to. I'm saying like right now, you don't, that wasn't provided to, uh, Sean to say this is how this, this number is broken down. It's just the same number we've been using. Indirect costs that just are variable, basically.
You, you have those numbers on, because you were showing us the you might not have it with you tonight, but.
And, and I was just asking if that was available. I, I'm not saying that, I'm not asking to have it created. It just, it, I understand the indirect costs, I understand all that goes into that. There just wasn't a number provided that was built out. It looks like we just put equal signs every year and just said, let's just keep it the same somewhat arbitrarily.
Let me.
And the only reason I ask, again, it, it's a, it's a large percent of what is in 401's budget. So I, I, I think it's helpful to understand it.
So the, the indirect cost reimbursement component, I believe, and I'm trying to go quickly here. So if I'm a little imprecise, I apologize, about, uh, 2.9 million. And that, that's in, uh, 2025, increasing, uh, the rate of, uh, five percent per year to, uh, 3.5 million by the, the last year. So that's, that's in an attempt to try to account for the fact that there's cost increases in those supporting departments that you, that we were talking about before, HR, finance and, and so on. So there is a bit of margin built in to that projection and, and the operating cost assumptions to account for that. And because we're trying to keep the, the overall total transfer number at a reducing percentage of your total revenues, the, the, the other component is the part that's, while increasing, it's still a smaller percentage of your revenues.
It's not increasing at the same, the same rate.
Yeah.
So it's still going to be increasing overall. So it does add to the total rate increase amount. That five percent is a, a tangible number that does create this increase that we're passing on to the residents. And then, so I'm between FY25 budget and FY26 budget, just looking at the total, it's a 40% increase. Does that sound right? Does that look right? Did I do that math right? Forty three million this year, last year was 31 million.
I think that would include capital. That total budget number would be inclusive of capital. And so, um, capital expenditures can be rather, for lack of a better word, lumpy over time, depending on when the capital projects are taking place. If we were to look at the, the projection of just the operating costs themselves, so if we, if we take your budget, and that's kind of how we model this, is we take your total operating budget for the departments. And then we back out of that, um, your capital costs and your annual debt service costs. And the reason for that, we track that in another place in the model, but it allows us to then be able to talk about just the actual O and M or operating and maintenance costs of the system on a standalone number. Uh, for that, uh, on a forward looking basis, it's about, uh, for 2025, uh, again adjusted, it's about 24.7 million. And that would be increasing by the end, uh, to 34 million over time. And again, we had talked about some of the reasons for that rate of climb, additional personnel inflation impacts on, on your operations. Um, some of the revised information, uh, for repair and maintenance costs built into there as well.
Okay. All right. Yeah. So, so my biggest question is just that transfer to general fund, just how that's built out. Again, I understand the indirect costs that build that. It just seems that there's not a, a specific number that that's built out to or tied to percentage wise. I mean, because again, it's 15%. Last year it was 20%. Or in 2024, so it's, and it's 25% around in 2022. So just trying to understand, wrap my head around what that number is. But, um, for now, it's all the questions I have. Thank you.
In the 22, 23 and 24, you're dealing with actual numbers and then, um, 25 and 26, you're looking at budget numbers. So again, you know, we budget, when we budget, we budget as though we're going to spend everything. But at the end of the year, we actually don't.
So I understand there's a true up process. Yeah, I understand that.
So that doesn't factor, like, when you're looking at the actuals, you're not dealing with carry on, the carry for. Okay. So the things that weren't spent that were budgeted.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I, I get it. I, I understand what the words you're saying. I just, again, I don't think there's, I understand what you're saying. It, it, it just to have that number actually broken down, because it's a big tangible number and how exactly we've built it, um, would be very helpful to understand how this is all built out. Thank you.
We can get you the breakdown.
Okay.
Any other questions for Sean or for Lance or Vlad? Okay, public comment? Who wants to? Sure.
Good evening. Albert McNamee, 3603 Golden Gem Road. Thank you, Sean, for your presentation. As just an average member of the public, most of this is way above my head. However, what I am aware of as an average member of the public is that when we look at budgets, a financial projection is only as good as the information that we give Sean. My question is, Commissioners, how confident are you that the information we provided, Sean, is substantial enough to base a budget on? Let me give you an example. There's things like risk assessment. There's things like contingency. These are things that I understand that nothing's been mentioned about. Now, Commissioner Nesta brought to our attention not too long ago that the comprehensive plan was based on water consumption at Golden Gem Road. Water consumption that we don't currently have. So that's one instance when we're basing financial projections on information that's completely invalid. What other information do we present, Sean, that may be completely invalid? Well, Commissioners, it's only about three weeks ago I came to this dais and I made you aware that I got information from planning department. And the planning department's current information is based on information back as far as June of 2024. And at that particular point, they had only like 10,900 houses that they had projections in some stages have been built. I would guess that today that's about 40% more. My question is, who and when did we start to implement this financial projection? And do we really know if we can service the properties that we're building? Because if we can't, can we issue occupancy certificates? And if we can't issue occupancy certificates, can we collect impact fees? Impact fees, are we collecting all the impact fees that we should have been collecting? Or were Southwood Commons giving impact fees waivers that have never been taken into consideration? There's a whole lot of things that I don't know. There's a whole lot of questions I continue to ask. I made a public record request this week. I made a public record request this week regarding the critical infrastructure of lift stations. Unfortunately, I was denied that information, apparently it's protected information. But I can ask how many fire stations there are, I can ask how many fire service people there are, I can ask how many engines there are. But I can't ask how we move shit around the city.
I have some real, um, questions on some of these issues and I want to talk as fast as I can without losing my lungs. Uh, one is the transfer to general funds can be very specific and should be. Um, some of the things that were mentioned should be under personnel costs, the health, um, the medical, the person. Uh, anything to do with personnel should be under personnel costs, they shouldn't be under general funds, transfer to general funds. The IT stuff could be under a line item of IT specifically. Uh, which is what it is in some of the other departments, including they had it under Fire Department Police, et cetera. They had those under IT and mentioned buying computers and buying phones and stuff like this, they were specified. Um, if you do it in one department, you should do it in the other, and we should be specified as what you're getting and et cetera. Um, so there shouldn't be just a lump percentage. When you're running a budget and you're running a business, you need to know what you're spending money on in each department at your business. Um, that's silly. Um, i- it's like a slush fund then out of that department. And if we're spending all this money, we as citizens need to know what we're buying. Um, and another issue is wastewater. We buy wastewater from Orange County, um, we get it free from other places. Um, we need to know this right up front, it's part of our expenses and income. And, uh, it needs to be accounted for in our budget. We need to know how much money we're spending and making, and it's like sixteen hu- uh, about over sixteen hundred. Um, a month that we pay whether we get water or not from Orange County. And then we pay fifty-one cents a thousand for every, for all the water we're getting from Orange County on top of that. So like this last month, it was, uh, sixty-seven hundred dollars or so the water bill was from Orange County. Well, we can buy that water from our citizens that have flooding going on. Why not pay, um, Clear Lake for their water instead of charging them for pumping it out? Um, they deserve the money. And it wouldn't cost them as much to get rid of their problem that wasn't their fault to begin with. Um, pay them for that water and they deserve that money, um, to compensate them or at least break even. Um, and there are so many other questions I see in 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 this. But we need to account for and be informed of what's going on with our budget. And not be guessing at what's in there and what that, uh, slush fund is all about.
I just got a real quick question before you start my time, is it a public comment section or is it just going to be this three minutes on the rate increase talk? Because I didn't hear a public comment section in the beginning.
This is only on the, on the water.
I understand. Is there gonna be a public comment section?
No.
Okay, so I'll just, but I was trying to streamline this in, so. Ian Kemble, Park Meadow Drive, Magnolia Park Estates, I want to start off with a quote, uh, hard times create strong men. Strong men create good times, good times create weak men and weak men create hard times. We are in the weak men, hard times chapter of our life right now. Unfortunately, what I've heard is a lot of big numbers being spit about on these pretty charts, and I do appreciate the time and effort that you took to put these together. Unfortunately, it doesn't really give us an idea of how we got to those big numbers, so like, as a common man, again, doesn't mean much to me. Um, as I also witnessed and listened here, had a lot of questions about where money is, percentages of increases of. General funds and this and that, and per the last meeting that I was at last week, when. You, Mr. Mayor, got so kind of reserved and wondering about having some, um, discretionary mayor spending budget, some oversight on that. Really was alarming, and it's still alarming to me, um, that you guys are so tone deaf. When it comes to the fact that we're here talking about double digit, double-digit price increases. And people will, I remember we're here last year talking about they don't flush their toilets because of what the cost it is for these water bills. I don't know how you got to an average bill of seventy-two dollars because it's me and my wife, my bill was a hundred and twenty-five dollars and I won forty-six last month. And then to sit here and say that we want to spend six hundred grand on a piece of property, we don't know if we have it, or we don't know if we want to need it, or what we're going to do with it, was disturbing. And then after spending almost eight hours at this meeting last week. Uh, I turned it on in my car on my way home because I had to go feed my dogs, and then to hear you, Mr. Mayor, close the meeting out with. Hey, compadres, my buddy's selling his lumber bu- business over here, you might want to think about what buying it, and oh, isn't it a historical building, yes. So here we are again, after spending eight hours talking about frivolous spending, being more accountable to our spending. Being more transparent to our spending, and none of that is happening, and you suggest to spend more money of taxpayer money to buy your buddy's company's property. Tone deaf, I don't understand it. I sincerely want to invite Doge once again back to this city to go through our budgets, to go through our spending, to go through these. Past few years to understand how we got to these monies, where money is being redirected, where it's being transferred, how it can be saved. How it can be spent more effectively and efficiently, because what I see here is just a bunch of guys putting numbers together. Hoping it works out, and then another year or maybe come back and revisit it in the first half of next year. You know, what if we come back in the first half of next year and it's like, well, these numbers aren't working, we're going to have to increase again. Because you guys are blindly and unintelligibly looking at a budget and hoping that it works. Moving money around to to Bob Peter to pay Paul. It makes absolutely no sense, and you guys need to be more transparent, and you guys need to be more clear on how our money is being spent.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane. I come up here religiously because I want a better Apopka, better for me, better for my wife, better for my daughter, better for my grandchildren. We take pride over the years, so hey, we got a low mileage rate, we've got great utility rates, well, get, we got what we paid for. You wouldn't have had the big crowd, and tonight we probably have a bigger crowd if it weren't for the weather. If it were one, two, three percent increase, inflation goes up every year by that, so pardon my French, a fart in the wind. Now, forty percent over two years, it's a result of poor planning, poor budgeting. Failure to fix the water meters, three years, we're still talking about these darn things. Lack of preventive maintenance, ten years without a developer-free increase, this is crazy. July of twenty twenty-four, thirteen months ago, I sent you all, uh, recommendations, eight recommendations. Two of you are hurt from, thank you, never comment about the recommendations that would make this a better city today. Wake up, stop talking and start acting, I have an assignment for each of you, you can rotate it around if you like. Commissioner Anderson, I'd like you to break down the development process by steps and find ways for us to slow the process. For instance, separating the change in land use development and zoning, you stretch it over two meetings means we buy two to six weeks. We need to look at developers, it's against city ordinance to be doing construction work in the weekends, ride by the construction sites, it's going on. When did we find them and when have you suspended they, their, uh, their construction? Commissioner Velasquez, through a post-exit interviews, that's three to six months out, we'd like you to apply your detective background. And find out the underlying cause for people that leave the city. Commissioner Nesta, I'd like a budget plan from you to ensure timely and accurate information, allowing for timely input and an accurate budget. Commissioner Smith, I'm tired of hearing about South Apopka, specific timeline, all by October fifteenth. Mayor, step-by-step camp we-wah plan, you sold us on, hey, look, we're gonna be okay on this, we'll break even. Well, let's see a plan, and a twenty-year strategic plan, what is that? If you fail to have any direction, guess what, you're how we're at, I have a couple quotes for you. Quote, when things go wrong in your command, start by waiting for reasons and increasing larger concentric circles around your own desk. General Bruce Clark. Quote, the day soldiers stopped bringing you their problems is the day you have stopped leading them. They have either lost confidence that you can help them or concluded you do not care, in either case is a failure of leadership, Colin Powell. We have a failure in leadership, I continue to bring up ideas, I continue to come here. Not because I believe you as leaders are going to take care of it, it's my hope and prayers that someday you're going to wake up and listen, thank you.
Is that it? Okay. Riley, Lance.
So, thank you for your attendance and attention. Um, what I'm seeking at this time, again, is another consensus, we do, I do have to bring the resolution back on. September seventeenth at our seven o'clock meeting. Let me give, share with you one of my concerns. I have included. The, as as we discussed at the previous meeting on September third, the fifteen point five percent in the tentative budget. Our final budget hearing is scheduled for six o'clock on the seventeenth. So the final budget hearing is actually before the resolution is approved. Typically, it works after, because it usually would have been approved on that one at the third. So if, I'm hoping that we're able to come to a consensus, uh, on what we want to include in there. Um, because it depends on how I would handle that final budget hearing. I may have to handle it in a situation, um, of a recess and continuation as we did the tentative budget hearing last year. So I think you've seen both scenarios, I think Sean has explained to you the impact on both of those scenarios. Um, we're looking at a, with the fifteen point five, nine, six and six, overall, it's a smaller increase. I think the first year will give us what we need and the next few years will be a lower increase. And I know Commissioner Smith, this is one that you were comfortable with, and Commissioner Velasquez, I think this is one that you were. Discussing as well and wanted to understand, so we've made those adjustments, and I just need that consensus.
And that was the fifteen nine?
Fifteen point five, nine percent, six percent, six percent.
Fifteen nine. I'm sorry.
Fifteen point five in twenty-six, nine percent in twenty-seven, six percent in twenty-eight and six percent in twenty-nine. But the only thing that the resolution is just for FY twenty-six year at the fifteen point five.
So no matter what we agree to, this could easily change next year. So even though we're saying fifteen point five, nine, six, six, next year could be twenty, could be ten, could be three.
Yeah, we gotta come back every year for whatever we do.
Okay, so we're not agreeing to twenty-seven, twenty-eight to twenty-nine?
No, it's just in the plan, I need to complete this study. If I'm ever going to go out and secure financing, I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm fighting Nicole, I need a plan. And I need a plan that has been somewhat adopted by this council, we have to show that we can pay that money back. If we want to move forward with these projects.
I understand the debt service coverage ratio that that we'll, we'll have to obtain. I would just be surprised that a bank, any lending institution would be okay with us. They're, they're using numbers that we haven't approved, we've just given soft nods to.
Let me let Sean speak on that.
Mine was on a different.
Oh, well, let me, on a different.
One, uh, comment, um, if you are going to go to the market for for borrowing. Um, then one of the things that the lending community is going to want to see is a, uh, an adopted plan of, um, rate adjustments that would be sufficient to cover. Again, those margin requirements and other items, so they would want to see a multi-year plan in place to give them. Uh, assurance that there are rates in place to take care of the needs of the system, at least projected at the time when the the feasibility analysis for any borrowing would be conducted.
Okay, so your recommendation is that we do approve a four-year rate increase plan, not just a one-year plan?
We're looking at the the four-year window, but with the potential to adjust the latter years based on those other initiatives that were mentioned.
Okay, we didn't discuss on this sheet that was provided to us, and this may not be for Mr. Sean, it, I'm not sure who. The the additional capital items removed or reduced, we didn't go over those numbers at all?
Yes, Commissioner, those were.
Hold on, Mr. Sherman, you gave me a weird look on that, did you not see this yet?
Um, I think, rather, is this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner, those are the, some of the additional items referenced in what we're looking at as we move into FY twenty-six. There's a list of some trucks there, uh, that we're going to reassess before we make that purchase to see if we do operationally need those. Or if we can extend the life of the trucks that we have currently.
So is that, that, so it totals, so part of it's a reduction of nine hundred thousand from lift station number seventeen, the one that we've been discussing. That's at six point two million to.
Yeah.
Fix.
So what we're looking at there, the initial estimate on that project from the consultant. Had a thirty percent built-in contingency on the project. Vlad, uh, our public works director is reassessing that to see if we can drop that contingency more to what our normal ten percent contingency is on those projects.
Okay, and then so that nine, the capital improvement plan. For for Fund Four One, nine point eight eight, one million, is that after these are removed?
No, those have not been removed, removed yet, no.
Those are just possibilities.
Correct, those are additional areas that we're going to try and, and, um, reduce additionally. That amount to go back to Raff tell us to, to hopefully impact the fees for future years.
And and remember, we still got to make it an eight point seven million dollar adjustment with this fifteen point five, nine, six and six. So.
Can we, why don't we just move forward with removing those items now, save one point two million and then. What does that look like with a rate, an updated rate with that in mind then?
The what he, what he was looking at, it would impact twenty-seven through twenty-nine, not twenty-six. So I don't know, the the list of items that you gave him was that.
Yeah, those were vehicles in twenty-six.
That was in twenty-six.
Right, in twenty-six.
No.
FY twenty-six, so the first year budget, what we're talking about. So we could remove, we could remove all of this one point two seven million that you provided to me now and get an updated. Rate adjustment, adjust our rate as needed from there.
It depends on how they're funded in twenty-six and can see what the impact of that would be. Yeah, so it depends on how they're funded in the model.
This, this list, yeah, that's my list.
That's, I did not.
Okay, so you don't know what, wh- when you were putting this together, what did this come out of?
No, we took that out of the tentative budget that's listed, those are capital items identified. And as I had mentioned, we tried to identify some areas that possibly could help improve the rates in the future.
So from Fund Four One?
From Four One, yes.
Okay, so these are.
Those are Four One.
But you're talking more future, right?
Right, well, the, again, the exercise was to try and look at some of the currently planned capital purchases. To help impact the rates as we move forward in the plan.
So what I, I, I don't want to do like an artificial rate decrease and come January, February. Because we have the information now that we can do it.
We would have to, we'd have to see if that impact would actually make the difference we need, I think Raff Tills would have to look at that information a little bit further.
Well, let's go through that then. This, you guys provided this, so that's the only reason I'm asking about it.
Right, it's part of that exercise of going through FY twenty-six operations and capital plan to make some of those reductions. To then come back and hopefully reduce the rate moving forward.
Well, let's tighten our belts and see what this looks like upfront on a rate adjustment then. If we can do it come January, February, we can do it now. That's my request.
So, um, I think that's one strategy that was being discussed.
Yeah.
Um, prior to getting to the, before we got to those scenarios, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, understanding that that's a question that you have, um, but again, I'm still looking. For a consensus in regards to the resolution, I'll try to have that answer for you. But right now, we still have the, um, fifteen point five factored in the budget. Um, nine, the nine, six and six is what is being recommended by Raftellus.
So you want me to motion tonight, Mr. Jackson?
I I don't, I guess it's a council, I can't, I think more of a consensus because we can't vote, you have to vote on the resolution. So it'd be great to, if if I could get.
Well, I'm still.
I can't, I didn't think I could, so I try, yeah, so I just need a consensus of what actually put in this resolution. And in the final budget.
And I think we can, you know, hopefully we can come back in the first of the year and we will see the impacts that we've made.
Yeah.
Um, and and we can use that going forward, but Sean's got to work off numbers we've got, he can't work off numbers we think we're gonna have. And so that's the 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 difference between what Sean's doing and what we're we're hoping for is.
Yeah.
You know, it's it's a, it's a, you know, couple of million dollar difference.
Yeah, and that was intended before we got to this point with these alternatives, so. So yes, Commissioner Smith, that's what I'm looking for a consensus.
So we would be moving, removing all these FY twenty six major capital projects that you listed here?
The way we presented it, the goal was to have FY twenty six, we start FY twenty six and we assess. Those items as possible items to not purchase, which would then have an impact as we move through the rate plan. To help improve the rate for twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine.
Correct.
But now lift station, isn't that a critical?
Lift sta- lift station is not on, just talking about specifically the bottom table.
Yeah, the bottom part, but it lists.
Uh, that, remember, that was the, our typically our projects carry, we try to plan a contingency of ten percent above the estimated cost. When we went back and looked at this, the consultant that prepared this, I think Vlad's back here. Uh, initially put a thirty percent contingency on this project, Vlad is looking in into that. And thinks we might be able to reduce that down to a ten percent contingency, which would then again leave some additional savings out of what we're budgeting. But, again, as the mayor, to the mayor's point, we want to make sure those are solid numbers um before they're built into the plan.
And again, as he mentioned here in the further act, city actions, search uh for additional operating and small capital budget efficiencies as we move through. FY twenty six. So, yes, is the objective is to lessen the impact going forward.
So it's actually all the vehicles for public services then?
Yeah, and I think you have to reevaluate.
Yeah, and we do have a large fleet in public works and utilities, this would be primarily utilities, operations, vehicles, because this is a four oh one fund, so. But we do want to make sure that we're getting vehicles that we operationally need and then assess the life value that's left on those.
Sean, would would a three-month, you know, the one, so going through the end of the, end of the fiscal, no, end of the um calendar year. Would that give you enough comfort if we, the the things that we've kind of projected? Um, would that give you enough comfort that we could look at a rate reduction as of February or something if we were to? Or does it, you need more than three months of data on these additional proposed updates that that Riley put, you know, with our. The public works team put together, would that give you enough comfort that?
If um if we had the the plan of what items could be paired out, but what we're talking about, um, then. That should be enough time to um to look it over and and see um what what those could do. Um, the the magnitude of the numbers being talked about, I I I missed that earlier a little, I apologize, what was the? The dollar value was being spoken about?
It was one point two seven million, one point two seven million.
Okay, um, in terms of your total capital plan, that's maybe half a percent. Of the total expenditure over the five-year period in terms of the dollars in that plan. Um, if you do it as a a one-time hit to expenditure, that the benefit is really to your cash balance as far as. What would happen in terms of the rate?
Which isn't the first year, the whole point is to increase our reserves, so this would dollar for dollar quickly change that, correct?
It would, um, it would have an impact in that first year by that amount that's cut, yes, sir. Um, in terms of the the rate path, it would, I'd have to look at it, but it would probably be. Um, very small on a percentage basis, like fraction of a percent if I had to wager a guess.
In the same way of us coming back to you in December to reduce the rate, we could also just reduce the rate now and if it's not working. Increase it then in February, correct, with the same data, just do the exact opposite if need be.
That's that's the council's decision, how it it would want to to approach that, I believe.
If if we reduce the rate, we have to reduce the budget because the fifteen point five is factored, that revenue generated, so.
I I understand that, I understand the relationship there.
I I'm still in the same place I was when we met in the city council meeting, as I said then that. We enjoyed these low rates for for years, not just since this council or this mayor's been in office, but even before. And we've always bragged about how cheap it was to live here and that's why everybody was moving here, now it's caught up with us. And so we've enjoyed as long as we could, so now we need to do what needs to do.
Okay, Commissioner Velasquez?
Which is, we're doing the nine, six, six and six, or we're doing the fifteen?
Fifteen point five, nine, six, six.
Okay. But, when we were at the council, at the last council meeting. Um, we had also kind of considered the nine, six, six and six.
No ma'am, what we had presented at the previous meeting was fifteen point five, fifteen point five.
Five, but the reason why we're here today was to try and reduce that.
And we did, and we did, in the second year we reduced it, it was, the first presentation was fifteen point five, fifteen point five. I think it three and three, as he presented, let me go back. See?
See, right.
That was the initial, and then after the alternatives came in. And we know that the nine point seven five, he, as he explained, it doesn't really work, it's a cumulative increase of forty five point one more over time. With alternative two, the fifteen point five, nine, six and six cumulative increase of forty one point five. So it's less of an increase over time, it gives us the hundred and fifty days of reserves, which is needed. Whereas the other one is, I think, barely made the hundred and fifty, was a hundred and twenty, I'm not sure. But in any regard, that's the difference, so this is the recommended, the fifteen point five, nine, six and six. And the resolution and what is factored in the budget is the fifteen point five and. The resolution that I that was tabled that I need to bring back, well, that's what I'm trying to get a consensus on at the fifteen point five. In regards to the overall plan, if we want to work the plan that we're talking about. I need to be in a position to go out and secure the funding with a plan that has been accepted by this council.
Well, not not only does it have to be accepted by the council, if without support from Raftellus to.
Oh, it's got to be sound.
Ri- ri- right, so you know, putting a number out there that's not sound.
Yeah, it's got to be sound.
It 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 won't work for us to, for any borrowing.
Exactly, it has to be sound.
Listen, I think we we're all up here, we all understand that this is not, this is, makes us uncomfortable, it's not an easy, it's not an easy decision and. I, you know, nobody wants to to, you know, keep rates as low, any lower than I do, but but. We've got to, you know, we've got to face the facts, we're we're, you know, we're in a, we're in a hole, we've got to get our, we've got to dig our way out of this, but. But I I think we've got a pretty good plan, uh, like I said, I've been proud of our, you know, the utility billing side and public work side and and Radley and. Everybody collectively getting together to try to come up with some some revenue generating, you know, uh, ideas as well as some. You know, some cost-cutting ideas that by the first of the, you know, by the first year, we might, we can see some results and if if, you know. If we can, if we're able to sell water that we're not, we're not collecting money on now, then that's obviously, it's, that's, that's easy found money. So we just got it, but we got to prove to to Sean and his team and Raftellus that that we actually can do what we say we're gonna do and so. You know, he's always looking behind and we're, you know, we're trying to look forward, but we can't until we've, you know, as far as when it comes to to loans and. And you're trying to get 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 a loan, so, you know, I go back to, listen, this this is not an easy, it's not, it's not. Nobody makes this in a, you know, in a joyous way, we 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 wish we were, you know, six, 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 seven or whatever. You know, but but we aren't.
Yeah.
And and by the same token, just as you would assume that there may be a possibility that the rate could go up. In twenty seven and twenty eight, there's also the possibility it could go down in twenty seven and twenty eight if we do this.
Yes.
What we're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, I feel I feel good that we're gonna, we're gonna see some results, I mean, we, the team is really, they're really engaged, they're really working hard. Um, we've already seen some results in the, you know, the month or two that we've been working at it and, you know, we're we're. Everybody's engaged, they know what the, you know, what the plan is, um, and we're we're, we're working as hard as we can to get the number. Where we can, you know, we can reduce the the rate increases going forward.
Exactly.
So when we looked at the budget, I mean, when you looked at it, I'm, yeah, I mean, you, you each met. With the mayor as a team and you decided where you can cut some of the capital of. These additional capital items, there was nothing else in the budget that we can cut.
I mean, the the budget that you have, the budget with the fifteen point five is the same budget that was presented at the workshops.
No, I know that.
Yes.
But I'm talking about the adjustment here, where you're saying that we can take. Uh, the additional items removed, there was nothing else that in within the budget that we can.
I was, I was not including.
Commissioner, on that first sweep was some of the, if you want to say lowering fruit that we maybe could address. We'd have to continue going through it as we move through the operation of FY twenty six budget to see. If the efficiencies we're trying to build into the operation are actually resulting in those those efficiencies, so.
So it's like, I guess they there, but we're gonna see if it's a true need is what you're saying, and then that's where we're gonna. He, where he talked about gaining the efficiencies and making sure, but he, before he spent anything on vehicles, he want to look at the fleet. Do a fleet analysis to see where it stands, it's just taking some extra steps before, you know, proceeding with those purchases. She wants to know if it's any more public.
No, we're, yeah, we're, yeah, we're done with that, okay, so I'm just looking for consensus here. I.
This is what we need to do.
Yes, ma'am.
Nine, I mean, we're adjusting fifteen, nine, six and six.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
If that's what we have to do.
I know we all have heart.
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Anderson, she said, yeah.
What's that?
I I think I got a consensus, yes, from Commissioner Velasquez, Commissioner Anderson?
I'm I'm still at no.
Okay, well, at least I got three, I know you want, huh, excuse me?
So so you got three?
Yes, I have three, I know you want some additional information, I I'll get that for you.
Yeah, I think I I a lot more questions from this than I do answers at this point, that's that's the problem.
Okay, mayor, I'm sorry.
No, no, I I just then, I'd like to get those, whatever those questions are answered so that you're comfortable that the rate we're. We're providing is is what we we need to charge to 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 make sure that we're funded properly.
Yes, yes, tough times, okay.
Yeah, okay, all right.
All right, thank you very much.